They don't know how they're going to do it. So we're going to advocate for the state to take a bigger portion in that cost. Then House Bill 385 with the teacher pipeline challenges that we have statewide, well, nationwide, but particularly in Georgia. There was a House Bill 385 that allowed retirees to come to work full-time and would still keep their retirement benefits. That sunsets this year, this school year. And we're going to advocate for that to be continued, but with two changes. One, to increase the covered content areas right now is for three content areas based on the greatest need in our RISA. If our RISA is especially math and science. But if you need a social studies teacher, that's the greatest need as a science teacher in your building. And so we're trying to advocate to have at least all of the core subjects, ELA, math, science, and social studies covered. If not all of them, at least those. And then also to eliminate the one-year waiting period. If a teacher retires this year, they have to wait one year in order to come back for full-time work. So we want to eliminate that one-year waiting period and have them come back immediately if they choose to do so. Over the last two years that this has been in effect, there had been a total of fewer than 600 retirees statewide to come back and work full-time. That's duplicated headcount over a two-year period. And so there was some thought that this might cause a lot of retirees, a lot of retirements, and people coming back just to make a lot of money. As you know, teachers don't make nearly enough. So I don't think that's the issue. That's a concern that hasn't really borne out. But I do think this will provide an opportunity for those veteran teachers who are recent retirees to come back and fill the gaps where we have not been able to recruit highly qualified teachers in critical fields. And as I've shown in presentations in previous meetings, the number of teacher education graduates with bachelor's degrees in the University System of Georgia has declined by almost 37%, 36.9% over a 10-year period from 2014 to 2023. And if we don't find ways to fill those gaps with retirees and other qualified individuals, then soon you'll have school systems that don't have enough teachers to fill the classrooms. And so we're going to advocate for expansion of the Retiree to Work Bill. Then another thing that we've heard from students who attend Auburn State and who are going, who major in education, they go back home to Atlanta or other places, is that our housing is unaffordable. And so we're going to look at ways to provide some workforce housing for teachers. We're also going to contact the city and county to see if we want to make it for public service employees as well, public safety employees as well. But if not, we'll go it alone and look for workforce housing opportunities for teachers in years one through three. And those are legislative priorities. Any questions about those? If not, we move to our celebrations. Yes, sir.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the structure? Saying that pre-K will be involved in the private school community? The community? And I think you touched on something else about how hard it is to get teachers. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, sir.
Is your microphone on?
Thank you. Well, it's been in offer.
Okay.
As you know, I have an interest in being certified. Thanks to this staff. I call personally of human resources to direct what I need to do to become certified and good at science. How hard it is for the school system to get teachers in math, science, who's helped me advise, especially for political science, et cetera? And how hard it is for you to try to engage in the pain of the low money that you're paying at offering these people? Can you elaborate on those two issues, please?
On pre-K and the impact of pre-K? And then the teacher pipeline of pre-K, of course, as I've said before, the first compulsory grade in the state of Georgia is first grade. Kindergarten is not required. And some of our students come to school in first grade trying to learn how to hold a pencil. And we believe that if we can expand pre-K opportunities, particularly providing transportation and the reference support services for those students, if they go to pre-K, they'll usually continue to kindergarten and then continue to first grade. And we can start building that educational foundation earlier. And I think research has shown that the sooner you get a student in a formal educational setting, the better they'll be off in terms of their foundation of education and lead them to have better success in the upper grades. So we're looking at that, and the data shows that that is in fact the case. That's why we're committed to expanding pre-K. And we supplement each pre-K class by the tune of about $20,000 a year. Because the funding that we get from DCA does not cover the cost of our pre-K classes because of the enhancements that we provide for our students. In terms of the teacher pipeline, as I mentioned earlier, the highest need areas in our RISA are special education, math, and science. But make no mistake about it, there are shortages in every content area, nearly every content area. And I would like to say that the little money that we pay, we pay the highest in southwest Georgia in terms of starting teacher pay is $47.5, and that's not nearly enough. But it has been increased, not only the state portion, but the local portion has been increased over the last eight years. I think it is board's commitment to impact and positively impacting our teacher pipeline. So even with the higher salaries, even with our additional effort with House Bill 385 and Ms. Allison and her team's effort to find alternate ways to get teachers, individual certified, to teach through our partnerships with our colleges and universities, as well as through the new Registered Teacher Prendship Program for Educators in the state of Georgia, the first in the state of Georgia. And we have about 20 or so participating in that program this year. With that being said, it's still difficult to overcome a decline in 36.9% decline in the number of teachers being produced by the University System of Georgia every year. So we're going to continue our efforts to recruit and retain our teachers. Because as I said in a previous meeting, retention is the new recruitment. It does no good to recruit teachers to come, and then they leave after a year or two because they're frustrated. And you've seen that across the country with the climate in education, public education nowadays. So we're very intentional about providing support through our Employee Assistance Program, through our DCSS Moments, and through our DCSS Perch Program to provide those things that enhance the teaching experience in Dougherty County. We also provide mentor teachers, and we have a first-year teacher induction program where our first and second-year teachers go through additional training to help provide them with support to be successful in the classroom. So that's a long answer to a short question, Reverend Bush, but it really is not one thing that we do. We do multiple things, and we're continuing to look for ways to enhance our recruitment efforts and enhance and improve the teacher experience in the Dougherty County school system in order to retain the teachers that we're able to recruit and attract.
Now, I think that one of the items that you spoke about, one was the college.
Yes, sir.
Which I think will be enhanced.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any more questions about that? Oh, yes.
Yes, sir. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I'd like to speak to something very quickly. I'll try to be brief. As most of you know, I'm not running for the school board. This will be my last term because of work, you know, situation and family. And I hate to leave the school system. But I'm still involved in the community and plan on staying involved to the level that I can after that. And to that end, I've actually been attending the candidate forums that have taken place. There's a mixture. There's state, national, and local level politics going on and debates and forums. And if you haven't attended one, if there's any more that come up, it'd be worth your while to go. You learn a lot. In fact, to be honest with you, I wish I could be a fact-checker because having been in the community as long as I have, there's some things that are slanted quite a bit sometimes, and I have to stay in my seat. I told Ms. Hudley one time she had to hold me back or I'd have to hold her back. But it's because I care about the community. And it's not about today. It's about 10 years from now. It's about 15 years from now. There's things we have to do now to lay the foundations for later. I mean, I go back 12 years when I came on board, and I'll be real brief with this. We were $9 million negative in our general fund. We had to do a tax anticipation note to start school. We were a teacher furlough, staff furlough days. That was right before I came on the board. And now we're sitting at, what, in July, $40 million surplus? And we'll project $35 million next year because of healthcare increases. This board has come a long way, and it didn't come overnight. It didn't get bad overnight, but it didn't get improved overnight. But one of the things that keeps coming up in the meetings, and I can tell you many more, but one that I feel that we need to address is transparency. And I can't address, and this is across all levels, you know, you hear it on the national TV, you hear it everywhere, and I can't speak to, you know, the federal offices or the state offices or the city or county commission on transparency. But what I can speak about is transparency on the board. And a lot of people don't realize, and that may be something we've got to educate people more on, but the opportunity to be involved in the Dougherty County school system or any school system is there. And I'm going to use, I'm chairman of the Building and Grounds Committee, and Reverend Bush and Ms. Poole, we all serve on that committee as well. But to give you an idea of what a process goes through just using that chain, first of all, if an issue comes up, new construction or projects that have to be done, the professional staff handles it. They work on that. They involve people in the community. They involve outside resources to prepare a proposal to come to the board. But before it ever gets to the board, it then goes to a committee, Building and Grounds Committee, for instance. We ask questions. We review it. We look at any change orders that come in. We look at that. We go through the whole process. That is a session, a true work session, that's open to the community. It's posted. We have minutes. We treat it like a meeting. And we do occasionally have people come to those meetings. We have a frequent visitor that comes almost to all of them. So we used to have two that came to, almost like members. They can't participate, but they're there to hear and be informed. After that, vetting at that point, it then, with the recommendation or sometimes without, it'll be split. Sometimes the staff doesn't agree with the representatives of the board of that committee. It can go to the full board. At that point, it'll go either with a recommendation of the full committee, or it could be just the Building and Grounds staff, or it could be just the board members. And again, all of these things are posted. Then it comes to the board. Well, the first place it goes is this work session we're in now. Board members get the board packet with all the information in it, just like the grants that are on here now. I've had that, being an old federal programs money person, I look at those very hard. That's one of my areas. And so, but there's the opportunity then, a board member can pick up and say, "I don't quite understand this, Mr. Dyer." And we covered this in the work session. Mr. Dyer then will either be able to handle it himself, or he may call in a professional, such as Chief Conley, Bob Fowler, any of the different departments' curriculum staff, any of that, to provide during the work session supplemental information if those questions or depth of those questions require staff to be there. Mr. Dyer's very knowledgeable, so it's very rare that he has to, but there have been times where I've seen a whole herd of people in the back of the room because the projects were so complicated and involved so much. But during this work session that we've been in now since 11:30, this is the time that we also have questions and get input. After that, we'll go into the board meeting. Well, by the time we get to the board meeting, it's not long because it's been vetted, it's been discussed. There may be an afterthought that comes up with a board member or a point they want to make before they vote, either in support or non-support, but that opportunity's there too. Now, every one of these meetings, if you go online, you'll see our work session meeting minutes are there for you to look at. You'll also see a recording of today's session. You'll also see the board meeting that we're about to have. They're in this packet to be approved for accuracy and before. That's just one area. And I'm sure there's different parts I'm missing that, but that's the high-level overview of that. We have curriculum committee. We have the finance committee. The finance committee will get information, for instance, on the senior tax exemption. Professional staff will work at that. They'll look at what's got to go into it. We don't want to go back to being $9 million negative. We want to stay on the road we're on. So it takes due diligence to do it. And at that point, it'll come to the finance committee. Finance committee will review that. There are three board members on that committee that'll come to the board. In that situation, even after the board, if they approve it, it's going to have to go to the legislature. There's more steps involved. So, but we've got, as custodians of the community's money, we've got to be physically responsible. That's why we go through these steps. This budget here, this federal budget, has been through many steps, including building level and parents, because the federal budget has to have parent involvement in it. Strategic plan has community involvement. All of these things are open to the community. So in the area of education, and I've heard this repeatedly, got to have transparency, got to have transparency. I ask, what else could we do? With the exception of maybe making sure the community knows these opportunities are there. That would be one thing that I would say. But to say that we're not transparent or we don't provide opportunities is not correct. Now, again, I can't speak for the city and county government. I don't work in there. I don't know their committees, but they're similarly structured, I feel sure. But I just felt that I needed to share that as it relates to the Dougherty County school system. And I could go into several other areas, and I would encourage you, if there's another forum, get in there. Do a little fact-checking yourself. Don't take everything because unfortunately, politicians are politicians, and we all slant things the way we need to. But just wanted to take that time, and I hope I didn't waste everybody's time, but I appreciate it, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Celebrations and thank you, Mr. Youngblood, for that. I was worried. Very appropriate, in my opinion. We'll move to celebration and announcements and we'll wrap up my report. Last year, we had three Dougherty County school system schools that were identified by the Georgia Department of Education for being literacy leaders based on their growth in literacy rates in third grade. And we found out this week that we have four other schools. We have eight schools total, four named literacy leaders and four named math leaders because of their exceptional achievement, at least 9% of students scoring proficient or above, or the high growth in reading and/or on grade level or above, and proficiency, grade level proficiency in math over last year. And so the schools that were named math leaders. Lake Park, I mentioned a school for their growth in third grade and fifth grade math, 11.1% increase in third grade, 35.4% increase in fifth grade. Dougherty High School, 17.1% increase in math. Monroe High School, 18.3% increase in math. And Westover, 17.3% increase in math. I forgot, Robert Cross is also on this list. I failed to put them on here. And they're just for proficiency, not growth. They have 100% proficiency, grade level proficiency in math. And our literacy leaders are Turner Elementary School, third grade, 18% increase in grade level proficiency in reading. International Studies, 10.4% increase. West Town Elementary School for the second year in a row, 22.1% increase in third grade proficiency. And then Robert Cross, 9.45% proficiency in sixth grade reading with a 10% increase from last year. And then seventh grade, 9.65% proficiency. Eighth grade, 9.63% proficiency. So thanks to those students and those teachers for the work that they do to improve education in Dougherty County. And then, of course, individual celebration. Ms. Rhonda Thompson, she's been to Inferno Board a few times. She was nominated as a finalist for Albany 40 Under 40 in the Youth and Education Division. She did not win. I think they had that last night, night before last, she didn't win, but night before last, yeah. And Ms. King, she was a finalist for, I think, community, yeah, not private services. He was a nomination, got listings on that. But when I talked to her about it, she was, I would have liked to have won, but I was just excited to be nominated. And so she's a stellar employee in her own right in her area in the disco services and procurement, and for her to be recognized as a 40 under 40. I wish I could be a 40 under 40, not because of recognition, just because of the age, but that's all right. I'm a little too old, but I... Anything under 40, right. But it's okay. Yes, sir.
I was there last night, but not 40 under 40, but they represented the school system.
Oh, great, great. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Very proud.
And so then last week, we didn't have board meeting, but last week was School Bus Safety Week, and we had Bus Driver Appreciation Day, so we want to make sure we acknowledge them as well. And then this week, we've been saying no to drugs, Drug Awareness Campaign, and we participate in that every year. We have a good time with that. And so that's been done this week. And that's all I have from Mountain Chair. And I know you mentioned the fact that we anticipate any action after executive session. I do not. So if you want to move into the meeting for sake of time...
Yeah, we'll go ahead and move. Yeah, for the sake of time, we'll go ahead and move into our regular board meeting, and then we'll go into executive session since we do not anticipate action.
Madam Chair, I just want to add to what Mr. Youngblood said. We are audited every year by the state. I do believe we are audited by a local auditing company, Mr. Dyer.
Out of Macon, Martin Jenkins, Out of Macon. Yes, sir.
I just want to mention that.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, at this time, we'll enter into our regular board meeting, and I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask everyone to stand for the moment of silence and the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay. Mr. Superintendent, do we have any public comments or presentations?
No, ma'am.
Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of the personnel addendum as item 2A.
So moved.
Check.
All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes. Are there any changes to the minutes from the regular board meeting held on October 11th? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Approved. That'll be approved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve a consent agenda, items 2 through 6.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The motion passes, and the consent agenda is approved. All right. Are there any other announcements or comments?
Just one. Madam Chair, we have trunk or treat tomorrow at pre-K. They have their annual trunk or treat, so they'll still be in the field. They know your site. Various departments within the school system and community organizations will have their vehicles out, and they will appreciate students to go around and get candy and goodies dressed in their costume. So we look forward to that festive event every year, so the board members are certainly welcome to attend.
All right. And that's tomorrow.
At what time?
That's at 9 o'clock, I believe it is.
Cute. All right. Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for student matters, personnel, and safety.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. We will now enter into executive session. We'll close our meeting when we get out, but like I said, we do not anticipate any action.
Don't get too comfortable, let's take your bag off. Nation to the yard.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Any a pose?
No.
Nation has it. Thank y'all for being with us today.